Councilwoman Waller, are you still on? Can you hear us?
Yes, I'm finally on. Yep, I'm here.
All right, glad you could hear us. All right, motion to reconvene.
So.
So. Yes. Reconvene at seven o'clock. Do you want to start with that? You're up, so.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
And your favorite. Yes, reconvene at seven o'clock. Do you want to start with that? You're up, so.
It's a honor, right, really?
Yeah. Okay. All right, so, um, welcome to, I guess this is your first in-person meeting. Congratulations on coming back. So, thank you for having me tonight. Tonight's gonna be a, um, an update presentation, but at your, at your packet was a, uh, a briefing memo that has much more information in it. I obviously won't cover all of that because I'll be here until the cows come home. So just, if you read through that in your own time and you've got any questions, I encourage you just to reach out to me. Um, but I'll highlight it as we go through here. Maybe. Oh, now I'm gonna go too fast. All right, so this is just a recap of the Economic Development strategic plan. That is the strategic plan that the EDC follows. If you remember correctly, these seven goals were put in place in 2017 after the city's comprehensive rewrite. Uh, they were updated in 2019 and starting with our August board meeting, we will be doing another update in 2021. Uh, five of these goals, the, the white ones are the ones that the EDC takes lead on. The, uh, goal six and seven had to do with branding, marketing, and creating a destination place for Albion. Falls with the, uh, chamber, but the EDC does have some either shared, uh, responsibilities in there or support. All right, so for business retention, attraction, and expansion, um, there's, there's quite a bit of activity right now, especially if we're just coming out of, or starting to come out of COVID. Uh, attraction-wise, we've got one that's called Big Fish, uh, that came from a confidential, um, conversation with a local relationship that introduced us to this company that wants to do some expansion. Um, and they're looking for a build-to-lease of about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Uh, Conco is another, um, attraction project that we've been working on for three, four years now. They bought two lots out in Industrial Park plus some footage on, or some frontage on Austin to do their grow operation. Uh, they haven't done anything yet. We do have a development agreement with them that simply states if they don't do what they agreed to do, they pay that discount of land that they received. So we have a, uh, secured estate in that property. Uh, they are kind of waiting till the council has a clear understand, understanding or direction on recreation. All those are very tied for this project and then we will be forward if, if that doesn't happen. So that's a project that those attraction is on hold. And then Trident, the building to the, that you can see up there is actually Trident's new build. Um, it's on the corner of Bernstein and Austin, so I hope some of you have already seen it. Uh, they're just waiting on some certifications and some approvals to become operational. For expansion, Project Wolf, uh, we do retention visits and we try to do retention visits with all of our companies once a year. It's a very difficult process because everyone is busy and they don't really want you to come in and talk to them just to retain them. Um, but this is where it pays off. Uh, we found out that this company went through a management change, which is a, a red flag. So talking with them, they have a need to either expand, um, or the opposite, which would not be good for Albion. So we're working with them right now to identify what their needs are and whether it would be an expansion onto their current facility or a new build. Uh, the state was involved in that retention visit. Uh, that's not typical. They don't always come out with us, but they were. So it was a really good opportunity to get the state in the very first conversation when we know there's a project. And then St. Clair Design and Engineering, I hope we all know who they are. They were, they're a great growth story for Albion. You know, they started in their garage, moved to the incubator, ended up buying the incubator. Uh, now they are, now they are adding on to the incubator with a physical expansion. Their plan is to request a property tax abatement in support of that growth and they'll be coming forth for your support on that. Uh, but this is a, an example of a company that, um, you know, we've, we've kind of fed them along. They've taken advantage of those different incentives like having an incubator with very, very reduced, uh, lease rates. And they've grown. They were up to about sixteen people during COVID. Not sure if they lost a couple during that, but sixteen is pretty good when they started out. I think when they bought it from the, the city, they were at maybe eleven, and that was a couple of years ago. So, you know, if you got five hundred employees, that doesn't seem like very many, but when you only have eleven, you go to sixteen, it's, it's a considerable jump. And then nine, ten Bernstein, formerly the Oster Building, if I remember correctly. Oster last year decided to move all its operations to Mexico, leaving us an empty building in the industrial park the EDC owns. Consumers Energy earlier this year leased that space to do a, uh, what do we call it? A tool hub? Um, yeah, electrical tool hub and training center, but since they've been on site, they're bringing additional work. So that building was much larger than they needed, but they saw a great opportunity. They pursued that. They secured the, the lease, um, and we're gonna see some new growth there because of it. And then retention, uh, the Sheridan Township has several solar projects. The, uh, River Fork Solar Project is one that is looking to move forward first. So they're supposed to be starting construction sometime in late summer 2021. Um, Christine Bowman from my office is actually working with them to identify their employment needs, uh, their recruitment needs, and work with them on some sort of job fair. So that'll be happening. The Workforce Task Force, you remember correctly, the council approved two special directors for the EDC board and we termed, uh, workforce as a project that allowed us to do that under legislation. We've since put those special directors as full directors and eliminated the special director position, but the Workforce Task Force that spun out of that still remains. And they're gonna be very focused on how the, how the EDC handles workforce. Um, in the past, we've done, we've done job fairs, we've done recruitment, we've done a lot of different things, uh, customized to the, 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 um, client. Two subgroups have been, have been, uh, established, one for childcare and then one for skills development. We all know skills development is a huge issue and not only recruitment, but retention of employees and residents in our community. So you'll see more of that coming forward. Uh, pre-development work, we've talked in the past about these projects that take a really long time to get anywhere. A lot of it's relationship building. Um, but as we're going through the process and prior to COVID, we were working with a company that was gonna purchase three parcels on Austin, right at the corner of Industrial and Austin. Uh, during that process, we got to the closing portion and found that we had title problems on one of the parcels, eleven oh five and a half, Austin. COVID hit and that project came to a screeching halt and hasn't come back to life. But we took that opportunity to continue forward and fix that title issue. So we've been working with the land bank for the quiet title process. Uh, roughly two thousand dollars later, we have the title on that fixed, um, and, and recorded. So when we go to close on those properties, we don't have to go through that six-month process of trying to clear the title. That happens a lot in, in projects, especially that, or in parcels that, that, uh, the city or the DDA or the ADA owns. It's not always clear how it got there. So in this case, that's the same thing that happened. Um, that's something that some developers that I've spoke, I've spoken to have indicated that we should do more of. Not quite sure how we all, uh, identify all these until we're doing closing. I mean, we know that there's issues, but we're gonna continue to, to keep traffic on. Uh, we're gonna continue to merge parcels where it makes sense, such as on the six hundred block of Austin. Three small parcels really are not developable on their own, so we've merged those to one parcel. It'll make it much easier for whoever takes it on, you suddenly only get one bill for taxes. They only have one property ID. So we're doing things like that to get ready, so the pre-development work that we can do and that won't harm the project, we're trying to take on. This is the last one. Broadband access, Upton got a, a grant and both the city and the EDC participate in this work room to identify what can get more activity with broadband. Hopefully by now you've met our Dreamers, but if you haven't, here's, uh, night one, when they all got to meet each other. This isn't inclusive. We had a few that couldn't come that night. Um, but it's, it's been really, really exciting. We've got seventeen small businesses. Um, that's thanks to a grant by the community foundation that allowed us to put on the first curriculum, the first course, and it was an intensive five-week. They will conclude, I think it's July twenty-sixth, it's a Monday night during council. That's the bad thing, because it will be held at the Bone Theater for a, uh, pitch competition. That's just their graduation. Come fall, end of fall, we'll have a great big pitch competition and it won't be during council, because I want everybody there. We'll have investors there. Well, anyone that's been a participant in the Dream Build Rise would be able to compete for investments, awards, things like that. Um, so if you haven't already checked out the website or the Facebook, I encourage you to do it. There's a lot of excitement. They've been posting, um, profiles on each of the Dreamers. Uh, so there's been a couple of those already out there, so take some time to, to check it out. Amy, what time is that? Um, the July twenty-sixth? I think it starts at six. Don't quote me. I will make sure you're all aware of it.
No, I didn't know I did.
Okay, community developments, the other side of the economic development portion of, of the EDC. Um. Key Body Block Project, that was the very first project that did the complete rehab in the downtown. It's four hundred, South Superior, as the bakery in the bottom, y'all know it well. That current, or that just won the Michigan Historical Preservation Award. That's a really good recognition for that project. Um, especially for it being the Dobbins' first redevelopment project. To get the Michigan Historical Preservation Award is, is just a recognition that they did it the right way. Um, because historical preservation and renovation is not easy, it's not cheap, and it's not painless. Uh, there were a lot of, of ups and downs with that one, and that was thanks to the city, too, with a, a CDVG grant that helped that project. Um, so that's some pretty, pretty good note writing for Albion and for the development that's happening in downtown. The Albion Plan, still on, into conversations with the state. Uh, nineteen million dollar investment, fifty-seven apartments, twenty, twenty-two, is that what it says? Yep, twenty-two commercial units. Last update I got from ARC, the nonprofit, was that they had a major funder, yeah, or investor in the project, and they were gonna close the fifty-five percent gap on that. So that first, that first investor came in with a forty-five percent take of that project. So that will really help ground that project and get those other, uh, investors on board. So of course, COVID made investors a little bit skittish and we didn't see that move forward like we wanted to last year. It should have been in construction now, but it's still hanging on. Uh, the revolving loan fund, y'all know that we changed the revolving loan from, from a federally designated fund to a local-only. And by doing so, we've been able to do some different things to help our companies. One of them was when we were, we modified the terms for the brewery. This was at the very start of COVID. We knew that was gonna, COVID was gonna be some amount of a haul. I don't think any of us knew how long it was gonna be. Um, so we modified their terms to make it a little bit easier. They then paid off that early with a debt restructure. So the, I think it was around September timeframe of last year, they paid that off. We don't have any current loans right now with revolving loan fund. Uh, so we have about four hundred thousand dollars out there and available for, um, debt financing. That's probably the easiest way to think of it. Uh, EPA assessment. We got the first award a couple of years ago, uh, six hundred thousand dollars for the coalition. It's the land bank, Battle Creek and Albion. We got the second, six hundred thousand. We got the second, six hundred thousand, so another two hundred is kind of earmarked for Albion. And we've been able to do a lot of work with this one. We've helped Project Green, Zero Day, or we'll be talking about that in a minute. We've helped understand the current issues at the five hundred Barien, which is the dog park. We all know that there's had been remediation there, but we just didn't know how much and what it meant today. Now we know what it is today. Some other developers that were interested have met and got to hear the, the updated information. This is important, so they're not going in blind. They're not having to pay for that five thousand, ten thousand dollar assessment on their own. It's, it's something that we're able to contribute, and it's often a very, very critical support of our local desire to see the project happen. Housing, housing, housing. We need housing. We need lots of housing. Completed projects, Peabody, in addition to that one, Brick Street Lofts. I think it's easier to forget that those apartment adds to our housing stock, our housing. Our housing options for our community. So they're not, they're not individual family owned, but they are housing stock that can be added to our collection. Two of them are in construction phase. One of them is the Wildflower Crossing. I hope you've all gotten the chance to get out to the old shuttered in Westover Park, or whatever it was called here. Westover is how I know it. I'm not sure what their original name was. But it's alive again. We've got new, new homes out there. They've put some investment in. The picture on that is what the community clubhouse will be. They're proceeding forward, even though the price of construction is ridiculously high right now. It's not going to stop them because they've committed to that. So you're going to see a, a more gated appeal out there with, with the clubhouse, and they want it to be more of a community neighborhood. And then Albion Charming Homes, that's the, the four lots that have been, are in pre-sale right now, forming in the Harrington neighborhood. Those two are what we're calling in the construction phase. The rest of them that are listed up there are under discussion, and discussions take a long time. Zero Day, we've been working with for two years. They're currently in, to where they're getting the legs and they need to get land control. They're, they're at a point now where they're expending enough funds on that project that they need to know that the city and the, the company, we both need to know that we're both committed to that project and we're willing to, to go the distance with it. So you'll be seeing that in the future. Project Hope is, is a confidential client that has been, oh God, it's been four years. He has his ups and he has his downs. He, he will call you on the weekend, and he, he needs to have something by Monday, and then it goes dead quiet for, for months. But you never know when that next call is going to happen that's really going to revive it, because this, this guy's got, he's got the money, he's got the know-how, and he does projects all over the state in, in Ohio and Indiana. So it, it's just when does Albion make the cut? When, when is the, the focus going to be on Albion? And that's getting closer. So we continue to work that project wherever it goes. Five Hundred Berry and I already talked about in senior housing, we are continuing to work with them as they identify any leads. Place plans are something that I recommended to my board that we look at doing. And the reason is, is we usually use them for public spaces, where we get everyone's input on what a public space should be. But five hundred Berry and, and the other one I'm thinking about is Del Rumpel. Those two make sense for housing, but, but Albion needs every type of housing. So it's not fair to say, hey, developer, we need every type of housing, so whatever you bring forward is good with us. Because we don't want to bring, bring something that, that the community doesn't want, that the community doesn't need. I don't know exactly what the problem is with the Albion Charming Homes, whether it's the wrong style, it's the wrong price point. But they're not selling. They're not, they're not selling. So if we can help the developer by understanding what the elected officials, what stakeholders, so the college, the chamber, the EDC, all of the boards, the community, the residents want to see there, then we can put a plan in place and give them a kind of a leg up on what would be supported. So we'll be working on a couple of those. And then lastly, remember back in January when I was here asking for a change in my budget so we could approve some COVID response funding? Well, the Albion Small Business Pandemic Response Fund was approved. There's four programs underneath that, two grant, two loan. We've had twenty-three applications out, four that have funded, closed, and have been verified. They only had ninety days to use those funds. So those four that we'd already awarded have already closed out their, their grants and been verified. We had four that had a withdrawal or were denied based on eligibility. And then we're currently working with about five that are at various stages. Still working on some documentation. Some might fall off. Some still are keeping, keeping moving. There's two that, that have some traction right now. Available funding is listed on, on that and in your memo. There's still some grant funding on both of those, but all of them have requirements. And the biggest one is they have, they have to show an income loss. And I can tell you, excuse me, of, of the four that were rejected, three of them were because of they couldn't show an income loss. That's a good thing. That's a really good thing. We just don't look at it as a good thing because they weren't eligible. Well, yeah, they had their best year in twenty twenty with COVID. Yeah, that, that's a great thing. There's other things that could have precluded them too, like the number of years they're in operation. We're working with those. If, if somebody is interested and they, they've got a, an eligibility issue that we can maybe recommend a change to, we're willing to take a look at that. And we're also looking at possible second rounds of it, whether it's for loans versus if they've already gotten a grant. But it's all of identifying that need. So with that, I think the last one, that's the last one. Yep, it is. I can answer any questions, or you can come see me at your leisure.
Do you have any questions for me right now? All right, so we do have the presenters here for Foodbridge, is that correct?
Just go ahead and take them off. She said they could be more beneficial.
Do we have anybody on that?
Pleased to say we have already a new superintendent, TPW, Kevin O'Brien, he's from Montana. And Kevin, if you want to come up here and introduce yourself and say a little bit about, about you. Kevin oversees the street parks and cemetery. So, rapid ad. Good evening to all, and thanks for your time tonight. I'm move, I'm moving here from Montana. I'm bringing twenty-nine years' experience in a city similar to the size of Battle Creek. I was their street division superintendent in the city of Missoula for the last four years. And I was the street supervisor for the last thirteen years, and I worked on that crew. As an operator, I worked from the ground up from the time I was twenty-seven years old. Anyhow, I bring, I bring what I hope will be extreme experience to the city of Albion. And I want to extend a thank you to Haley, to Patrick, and also to Jesse for making this very welcoming. It was a, an easy decision. And, and you guys have an extremely beautiful area of the country. I come from a different part that has its own beauty with mountains, but I'm looking forward to being here. And I want to tell you guys I'm very good at customer service, and the taxpayers are extremely important in this position, as are the workers and our, and as city manager. So once again, thanks for this opportunity, and I hope to meet more of you on a personal level as the future holds.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So Yeller, do you want to like to take this opportunity to speak?
I'd like to introduce myself. Thank you for having me, everyone. My name is Derek Chaney. I represent Coltio LLC, which was an interest in buying one zero zero nine Industrial Boulevard, as well as one zero zero seven Industrial Boulevard. Our goals here are to come into the community, provide jobs, thirty to start, seventy by two thousand twenty-four. We have all our plans. We're very prepared. We also have great social equity programs, such of which include diversity programs to make sure, and I know councilman Lawler is listening, to make sure that we are one and united, because I do see that in the community that it needs to change, and I recognize that definitely. And that's why I chose that to be my social equity program. And then another one is beautification of the town, so, you know, landscaping here and there. We really are just looking to take advantage of the time, of the town, take advantage of our opportunity here and really grow. You know, I just moved here from Florida two and a half months ago. And I've been in the cultivation industry for nine years. And I really was excited, and I'm, and I'm excited to get started somewhere in Michigan, whether it be here or somewhere else. So, yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jared Jeffries. I am here with Kent's Council Law Firm, representing client, or a client who just spoke here moments ago regarding his proposal to open a cultivation facility here in the city. I think this is a tremendous opportunity for you and everyone who calls the city home. These businesses bring jobs. They bring increased revenue for the cities that pass them in the form of increased property taxes, property values in the neighborhoods surrounding cannabis businesses in every state nationwide that have opted in. Increase over time, crime levels go down over time. If you want to bring illegal drug dealing off of the streets in Albion, you need to create businesses and legal regulations around them so that it is more enforceable. These businesses are an incredible opportunity, repeating myself a little bit here. On top of that, having watched the meetings, a couple of your meetings regarding this issue in the past, your city attorney brought up issues that, you know, voting down proposals without providing adequate justification could leave the city open to liability in the case of a lawsuit. It presents a number of dangers to you as elected officials. Your people in the city voted nearly beyond two to one to legalize cannabis in twenty eighteen. Many of you on council received less votes for your seats than the passage of the twenty eighteen ballot initiative. So I urge you all to heed the will of your voters, heed the will of the people who put you in the seats that you now sit, and to permit this business to open. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the gallery wanting to speak on an agenda item?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ethel Hope. I live at six oh one West Dairy Street. And I want to thank everybody for helping my husband celebrate his one hundred and third birthday, where he sent cards, came by and shook his hand. But my main concern, one of the concerns are, is the Guy Rumpel Street, the Guy Rumpel section.
So we are just addressing issues that are on the agenda. We don't have.
Okay, I'll come back to that.
Hello, I'm attorney Thomas Levine with Cannabis Council. I represent Mr. Chaney. So we're just here on the reconsideration of his permit. He's a serious businessman. This is a, I know it's a new and sort of scary endeavor, but this is really the right direction to take, to legalize this. It actually helps decrease illegal drug dealers in your town. And there's research, you know, backing this up, that the illegal drug dealers that are in town, their cash crop is marijuana. It's mostly what they sell, but they also sell heroin. So these are the people who you want to drive out of town by having tested marijuana, highly regulated stores that they would not dare sell to a minor, for example. These, these licenses are so valuable, they're not going to sell to a minor. There's no way. They're going to check those cards up and down and use technology to be sure that it's not a fake ID. So we have, we have that. And then the, the illicit drug dealers really want you to reject it because business is good with them, including in all kinds of substances. So I know that one of the concerns raised had to do with employment, you know. Well, this creates jobs. Amazon just came out as one of the first. They're not testing for marijuana to hire their employees anymore, because it is legal. More and more companies are going to follow. But there will be hundreds of jobs created within this industry. And, and so, you know, if you're concerned with jobs, then, then really voting for this reconsideration would make more sense. You know, there's a side of us that would prefer to perhaps adjourn these agenda items while we, you know, weigh our options. This would be for the item A and C are probably ten oh seven and nine, as well as the, the ten oh nine. You say the, I agenda?
Yes.
Marijuana?
Well, we are, the, the, the agenda is for the reconsideration of recreational marijuana growth, not sell.
I'm going to speak on both of them. So this is not the time.
You can speak in regards to the grow aspect.
Okay. Everybody showers, eight oh five, they'll have a drive, growing, producing, selling, that we can get our hands on. And I know he spoke about the people voted to, to make it legal. But do, do we have to grow it here to make it, for them to, to produce it? To smoke it, to have it here? My, my concern is, when you grow something here, you, you want to be able to sell it too. So my thing is, why grow it here? I mean, I don't want it. Most of us don't want it. I have fifteen grandchildren. I have four children. And growing in this here, do you know that you tamper into it when you grow it? How, how are they going to stop people from stealing it, smoking it, taking it out, and using it? I had my, my grandson eat it, when somebody brought it in too. I had my, my grandson eat it, when somebody brought it into the school. I, I don't think it's a good thing for Albion, Michigan. I really don't. I was sitting at my table, and I was saying, "Life is in Albion. Life is in Albion." Somebody asked me, "Why you live in Albion?" Because it's life here. I don't have to worry about all this crime, all this thing that's going on the other town. It's peaceful. We do have our problems, yes we do, but it is better than some places. But when you bring this other stuff in here, it is going to cause some problem. You might not think so right now, because deep pockets want deeper pockets for the money off of our children. You know, I don't, I don't see that. I, I don't, and I, I talk against it. I tell my kids I talk against it. Anybody talk to me about it, I talk against it. I don't believe that we need to grow anything here that's going to cause us a problem. Albion is good. Albion is good. Why taint it with something else? Why? I don't see it. Have, have something else that come in here to make money. Not this here, growing this here stuff and then selling it, you know, I, I just don't see it. That's my stand on it. And, and I pray against it every day. And I know we don't bring religion in here, but my kids have to grow up in here, my grandkids, my grandparents, and I don't want them to be subject to this here stuff. If you want to smoke it, go next door to the other town who's selling it already, growing it. Not here. Albion is vibrant. Albion is healthy. We don't need this. We don't, and whoever think they do, you need to think about it again. Do you have children, grandchildren, and what do you want? You must want to smoke it, you must want to go into the, a business of it too. But I don't see it here. I really don't. Albion is a peaceful town. Albion is a good town. Albion is a loving town. And we are a community that sticks together. But when you bring this in, it's going to have divisions, it's going to have problems, it's going to have some issues that we will not be able to stop. The police department has to hire some more people.
My name again, Ethel Hope, six oh one West Erie Street. And like I said, I thank everybody for blessing my husband for one hundred and third birthday. I usually listen to the council meeting on the phone or Zoom, but a couple of weeks ago, I was listening to it on my phone. And we were talking about the growth of marijuana. And I think, not for sure, but I heard that the lawyer said that we could be sued or whatever. Okay, now, now what about, we're growing all this, what about our people, our children, all the other people that buy this marijuana, smoke it, go and fly for a job, and get turned down? What do you, no, wouldn't get turned down? Is this council going to come back and stand up with them saying, "Oh, we said it was okay." Could you just go ahead and hire them? That's what I want to say. Thank you.
I question this.
Very, very briefly. No, no, public comments to be heard only. Public comments to be heard only.
Anybody else from the gallery that would like to speak?
Well, I'm Pastor Steven Williams. I live on Cass Street, up the street. Have lived here, what, seventy-six years? I was born here. It's different when you have been here and you see change, you see what goes on in the community. I'm also a teacher here. I see young people grow up. I haven't desired to see our young people limited to the types of jobs they have. I would like our young people to be able to get jobs that require skills, like an airline, like a nurse, like a doctor, like a attorney. Now, if you have a vision for your town, for us that have lived here and have had problems with our loved ones, who have gone through the drug issue, it's different for us. I know, you know, society has changed, but the vision for our community hasn't changed, even though society has changed. So, I would encourage the voters here to consider the vision, because we live here, and we have lived here a long time. And we see our young people go through school, and we see our people come in our society. If it's going to have a chance, we want to make them eligible for all kinds of jobs, all kinds of experiences. Right now, there are people in our community that are unemployable for certain reasons of drug use. And I don't see that getting better by doing something different. With my time, I would like to just say, I, I see a vision for Albion, for our young people to grow up here and be safe from all the other things that go on in our society. And I encourage you to consider that as you look at the things that we're facing. I guess I, I kind of feel like, sometimes you may feel intimidated. I hope you're not. I hope you're not intimidated by what people say. Do what's right. That's what you're going to be accountable for, because when everything, all is said and done, what's right will stand. That's my comment.
I'm sorry, so you were just hoping that you only get three minutes.
She could speak on the topic. She has to become the right topic. That's why she has a.
Anybody else? Okay, so we don't have issues for close sessions, correct? All right. So, before us, we had high downs in the packet, under the consent calendar, the medicine delivery session, invoice for the fat forward excavating and grading, the one-on-one, the ramp replacement, and I must be closer. So, support. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler? Councilmember, Councilmember Lawler, can you hear us? She's showing herself.
Yes, 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 you hear me?
Yes. Lawyer Jackson?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
And Mary Smith?
Yes.
All right, individual discussions. We have a request for reconsideration of approval of adult use marijuana permit for one of those industrial. Colin, do you want to do some information? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve? Someone will.
So, first of all, let me, again, my counsel had package information since we turned here after the discussion. So, this council is aware this came before the council the last time. The, the applications were voted on. Since that time, I've had conversations with several. One of, one of the conversations that came up quite a bit was that there was confusion that these applications were in some way associated with the sale of adult use marijuana. I'll just say recreationally, because I think that's the common term that the council knows of by, the sale of recreational marijuana. These applications have absolutely nothing to do with retail sales of recreational marijuana. The city of Albion does not have an ordinance on the books for the retail sale of recreational marijuana. The city has since twenty eighteen had an ordinance on books for growing and processing of medical marijuana. In twenty twenty, the council adopted an ordinance to allow for just adult use grow and, and adult use, I say adult use, recreational processing. So, the council approved that in twenty twenty. These applications that I had agendaed and we have on A and B and C are the first sets to come before council for recreational grow and process. Just to be simplistic about it, you know, there are existing grows in the city for medical. The difference between the existing medical grows and the adult use proposed grows is, is basically the kind of tag that goes on the plant. I mean, for all intents and purposes, that's the difference. So, it's, the, the council has, has previously approved medical, previously approved the ordinance for adult use. The, the city did an intensive review of the applications. It passed all the department reviews, it passed my office's review, it passed planning commissioner review, and received approval of all of those. So, the city, through its administration, would recommend approval, recommend that the council reconsider its previous decision. I said it a couple of times last time. I'm going to say it again. I would expect that if the council votes this down, which you are entitled to do, I would not recommend doing that, because I think you would expose both the city and potentially yourselves as individuals to litigation, meaning a lawsuit, meaning you would be sued, and the city would be sued. So, I just want to make that very clear. I think I made it clear last time, but I'm just going to say it again. It would be different if there were a deficiency in one of these applications. None of the departments, including my office, have identified a deficiency. That all being said, I've also talked, several council members have indicated a desire to revise our adult use ordinance to reduce the number of licenses that are available. That's fine. You can certainly do that. That's a problem that Leoni Township to our east had and did. And, and what they ended up doing was, they had a certain number of licenses that had had approved, and, and they lost, they reduced their number of licenses through attrition, and basically said, "The ones that are there can stay as long as they, you know, are in business, and, but they won't issue any new ones, and as those businesses stop operating, those licenses will cease to exist." From a legal standpoint, I think that's probably your best play. I think it's your safest play. If you want to reduce the number of licenses, that's something that's on the agenda further on. But as it relates to this license and the following two agenda items, you had an ordinance on the books. The facilities met the criteria of the ordinance, which is why they were recommended for approval. So, my recommendation would be that you approve them. And like I said, council can certainly make changes to the ordinance on the back end, but, you know, declining to reconsider these would have potential consequences for the city. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, councilman, why can't I?
Colin, have you spoken to our insurance company for the city to discuss whether they can cover a potential lawsuit brought on by the denial of these licenses?
I have not personally spoken to insurance, but my understanding is other members of the administration have, and the answer is, no, our insurance probably would not cover such a lawsuit in this regard.
So, what do you think?
It means that, just to, let's say, if we were, if we were sued and a judgment were written against the city, the money would have to come out of the general fund as opposed to our insurance.
And that would include all damages associated with whatever award to the person who wins the lawsuit? So, if we were sued and they win, we would be paying damages out of the general fund, and it would not include the insurance company paying in for those as well?
Hypothetically, yes.
Yes, councilman.
Yes, I would like to ask a few questions. With you being our lawyer, pardon, Colin, I couldn't understand the, why we didn't have some of this information for us before we got this, before we came in here. So, in this packet, we have all this information, and I don't know who really did, but I did, of the discussions that you said that did take place on twenty eighteen and twenty twenty. And to my knowledge, everyone, I can't say everyone, I didn't understand what it said, because I actually brought myself down here and asked the question, what was actually on the agenda? So, I took it as our lawyer on that day, I believe that he should have had explained to us before we had even made the call of yea or nay, what we could be up against, or we should have had this information before us to read of all the ordinance you had already put in place before some of us had even got on the city council. So, I thought that was real wrong, okay? And so, now we have to come up before individuals that are here trying to already put things in place on us when you did speak on YouTube and also on Zoom that we could probably get sued, okay? I just believe that some things were not decent in order for us. Some of this information had been given to us before we came in here. I don't believe maybe all of them might have not made that decision, okay? They would have had, they would have been clear on what they have done in the past and not. We don't even get that book, so we know all these court bits. And just my, and this all kind of hurts that the individuals that are here, just how, it's, just how everything the city is right now. I just, I don't care for it. It's like, it's just messy what we're doing right now, because I just believe we didn't have to go through this process of anything coming back on this agenda. It should have been taken care of on that day and done. And now we restate something that we had already agreed on due to, due to what we thought was taking place.
So, Mayor, um, I just, yeah, it is messy. We didn't have information in the packet before we came into the meeting, let's say, that this was just an approval.
No, I'm sorry, because that's not what I said.
But yeah, and so it was, we were approving the license for grow.
Correct.
Yeah, but we also discussed during the meeting that this was ordained ordinance in place that the city had approved. So, I mean, this, this was an ordinance that we all knew was in place.
No, no, they, we did know that this was in place. And even when you look into the packet per se, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty has not even put in there yet. That's what I was saying, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying about the other. I'm just saying the information so that the council could have looked at, reviewed before they had even made a decision to yea or nay. We did not have, is what I'm saying.
So.
During the yea and nay, I apologize, that's when you spoke up and said what you said. And I think we didn't have to go through that portion.
So, what I would say, and I understand where you're coming from, your counsel, those ordinances were approved by, not, not all of you were on that council, it was a previous council, but it was all a matter of public record. The applications that came before you couldn't come before council unless an ordinance was on books. I had no reason to suspect that this council would vote down an application, because they had, none of our adult marijuana applications had ever been voted down. However, when the council voted down the first one, I went back and watched the video. I made it a point to, to express to council the concern about arbitrarily declining licenses, because we had those ordinances on the books and because the applications had passed approval. And I, you know, mentioned the potential for litigation and lawsuits. And so, you know, I don't prepare the packets, and so I'm not blaming the city administration, but I don't put in what goes in the packet. Certainly, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has about whether an ordinance addresses that, but I, I guess, to a certain extent, I take the exception that I didn't give the council full information, because I made it a point to go through that these were grow licenses, processing licenses, and that, you know, you certainly can vote however you want to vote, but that the vote shouldn't be arbitrary, because they had cleared departmental review. And, and so, I, I guess I don't know what else to say, other than I, I, I believe I gave the council full information, and I recommended approval last time, and I'm recommending approval this time.
Council, so, I too went back, looked at all meetings. Councilman, on most of the votes, there were Lynn, myself, and another council member stayed firm, and, and this is just for the attorneys, you know, stayed firm in the know of adult grow. We stayed firm in that. We never changed our mind. So, it just so happened, in the last time we had the council members on the council, so, with some not knowing the ordinance and it being in place, none of us, as it was suggested, none of us had talked to one another about this ordinance or it being in place, or how we were going to vote, or what we thought. It was not a discussion. So, when it did what it did in the last meeting, it was just once shot to me because it had passed for the ordinance, you understand what I'm saying? So, we had, I was in the vote the first time, she was in the vote the, the first time when, when the ordinance were for more than four. So, those didn't change, but we had them mentioned on the council. So, that's why the vote went the way it did. I do understand that it is an ordinance in place. However, so what I'm saying by that is because we're bound by law in this place, as far as, because it's almost like a law. Once we say, once it was approved by the other council members, I get that. But I do have a problem with, and I will say this and I want it to be stated. There is nothing in place for people to wanna do these adult growth facilities. There's no help being considered and what's gonna happen to the people that start smoking. My position is, why I've always said no and continually said no is, I don't know one person that smoked marijuana and stopped there. I just don't. So, that's a real thing, that's a real thing. It might not be in larger cities or where you're from, so. But the people that I know in this community, I don't know, know, not even a child, a, a, a young adult that smoked marijuana stopped there. So, that was, you know, that was my consideration once again. I understand adult growth and like I have spoken to somebody else, I don't understand why there isn't more push for the medical than there is for the recreational or the adult growth. Because the medical is something that is taking care of a need, a physical need and a physical problem. And for adult, just to smoke, it's just recreational, it's just to soothe a pain that is more mental than physical. So, I don't understand, you know, I would like to see some of this as a suggestion. I would like to see the ones that want to continue in this business and make it grow. I would like to see you push more for medical. I would like to see, if, if people are worried about being stigmatized because they have to go through all these procedures to get a card, to get the, you know, the marijuana for their physical reasons, I would like to see you have an attitude towards pushing legislation towards a doctor can write a prescription and he can go to one of these facilities where they sell medical marijuana and they don't have to jump through all these hoops. And I would understand it more than just recreation.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Can I get some clarification from Councilmember Clark? Do you attend to support the reconsideration tonight? Are you still firmly in the no camp? I couldn't tell because you kind of, you went full circle.
Yes, Councilwoman. You know, I, I, I'm like this part, if it was recre, if, if it was medical, I didn't understand that. Being a teacher, I had children that had serious problems to the point that you would have to give them something and, and at that time I didn't know exactly what the medicine was, but you get them to the office, whatever it is, you gave it to them and it helped them. Okay, I can understand medical. Yeah, the planning commission, but there was someone from Sunny's that came and they were talking about medical marijuana, okay? I can understand that, but then they said, "We're not making any money. So, we need to go to recre, to, to adult use marijuana because..." And, and I said, "Did you get into it to make money or did you get into it to help people?" And, and I go back to that. It's, it's a money-making thing. And, and as far as I am concerned, it is taking advantage of people because you're gonna find some adult, because a child can't, no one under 21 can purchase. But you're gonna find some young man over 21 who's gonna buy it, get him a 16-year-old girl, he's gonna get her to use it and you're gonna continue to have that, that, that thing go on and on and it's gonna be illegitimate children. It's gonna be people getting hurt, killed and everything else. And I just don't see what it's like. And, and, and everybody says, "Well, you have to be 21." 21 doesn't really make sense because 21s will give it to somebody younger than them.
So, I, I feel that I need to stress this again. There are no recreational sales of marijuana in the city of Albean. We have no ordinance on our books that allows for the legal sale of recreational marijuana in the city. The city council has not addressed that. In fact, when it came up, it was voted down. Actually, to correct myself, it was tabled indefinitely, which is essentially the same as being voted down. The only, the only ordinance we currently have on the books is for growing processing and the only persons that they can sell to are to recreational sales that are outside the city of Albean. So, I want to be very clear. These licenses have nothing whatsoever to do with the sale of recreational marijuana in the city of Albean. These are grow and process licenses that are virtually identical to the grow and process licenses for medical, but for a different category. I can't make it any clearer. I'm happy to answer any questions. But I, all I can tell the council is, they put it, you know, we have ordinance on the books, they met the criteria of the ordinance, they met department approval. The, the city's recommending.
So, it's our obligation, our council, to make sure that we're acting in the best interest of our constituents. At the end of the day, there are some of us on this council who do not like marijuana at all and there's, and there are some of us who may ride the fence or, or waver on what they believe about marijuana. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter what my personal belief about the use of marijuana is or your personal belief about whether marijuana is a good or bad thing. It is what we have to do with right for the city. And right now, the city is in a perilous situation. We have voted to put an order on the books. I went back and looked at the June 15th meeting where we passed this ordinance and councilmembers, there, there is, it's one council member who voted no, who did vote yes on passing that ordinance, who voted no on this license. We are currently giving lots of red meat to people who would like to sue us. It is our obligation to make sure that the city doesn't get sued, that we, we decrease the legal risk that we put our city at. And right now, that's what we have to consider. It has nothing to do with marijuana. It has everything to do with legal risks. Can you go home tonight and be comfortable knowing that if we vote these licenses down, that we're putting our general fund, which is very healthy, at risk of being taken from us? And then, and then further, the opposite happens when cities lose these arguments. If we go, you know, if we decide we're gonna litigate this and we lose, which is very likely because we are violating our own ordinance by not approving this business, we are likely to be sued. Not only will we be sued for damages, we'll be sued for the full implementation of the entire marijuana policy that the state built into law two years ago, which means we could have things that we don't want in parts of our communities and that would achieve the opposite goal of what we have here tonight. So, I'm just asking every one of my councilmembers to think about the legal exposure, think about taxpayer money that's gonna be sent if we have to litigate. You all have received the FOIs in your, in your emails. We got the reminder today to start getting your stuff together because your phone calls and your text messages and your emails and everything that you, any word you spoke about this ordinance to anyone is gonna have to turn in. Please just do the right thing tonight and make sure that we pass these reconsiderations. And if you wanna talk about marijuana policy later and change, I'm gonna support you in doing that. But tonight, it's about the legal and financial risk that the city is at and I have to, I have to remain on that path. Call any questions, the votes are over.
Yeah, so she made her motion, the vote question.
Ms. Mayor, I have my hand up before you called a question. Thank you so much. I'm, I'm sorry, um, I just had, oh, I wanna read something and then I wanna ask Cullen a question. It says that the council previously, it lasted to opt out of allowing adult use facilities within the city of Albion. And it also says primarily this opt-out was to allow time for the state and the city to adopt, to, to adapt to the new law and to learn from other municipalities who had already adopted ordinances to allow these facilities to determine the best course to regulate the facilities. The council has directed the drafting of an ordinance to allow for adult use grow facilities and processing facilities only. So, my question to you, Cullen, is this saying to me and others that didn't quite get it, is this saying that council said yes? Or is this saying that council just said in 2020, "Draw up something just in case Albion wants to do this"?
So, what I think you're reading, Councilwoman Lawler, is a resolution that the, that the council adopted, which directed my office to draft the adult use ordinance. And I subsequently did draft such an ordinance and it had its first reading June 15th of last year, its second reading of July 6th of last year and was effective September 6th of last year. So, that was, I, I believe that was the resolution that council adopted directing me to do that and, and my office did do that and the council did vote on that last year. And.
Okay, thank you. So, my next question is, I would like to postpone this until Councilmember Lanu returned because the information was not put in the packet in order for her to make a, a informed decision. So, I would like to ask if we could postpone this and have a special meeting until she get, when she gets back.
So, we already have a motion that we need to address.
I'm starting the motion.
I, I, I thought you was letting me do my thing first before you called, before that was. Well, that's what I wanted before she, she called the question. So, Cullen, can you intervene? What, what are we supposed to do right now?
Councilman Lawler, before, before we get to the parliamentary issue, you mentioned putting something in the packet. What are you referring to?
Um, when, uh, council member, uh, when our mayor pro temp was saying that some of the information was not included in the first packet, so now it's included in the packet and I was just trying to ask to postpone, um, for Councilmember Lanu since she's just now, you know, receiving everything we have, but since she wasn't able to attend today, I wanted to know if we could postpone it until she, um, our decision, until she get, until she gets back.
Well, the, the, there's nothing in the public packet on, on these reconsiderations tonight. The, the information that is provided to council is, is information that, I think it's the, it's the applications that are not put in the public packet. It's the application materials that are not in the public packet because under state law, they're not permitted to be disclosed to the public. So, that's why. That, that's why they're given, they're given to council for consideration when you do your vote and then they're immediately collecting because they're not public.
Well, I was referring to what, um, Councilmember Jackson was saying, when she was saying if we would have had, you know, everything that we have now in our packet, it could have been taken care of. But if, if I'm wrong, let me know, but, um, I, I thought that's what I heard. So, now that we have everything that we need to really make a, an informed decision, I was, uh, just liking if she could get the opportunity to speak for herself as we can do as a whole on this matter, these matters.
So, to address the parliamentary issue, technically, I mean, technically, Councilman Clark's motion came first, so. If you have to deal with that motion, there hasn't been a second yet, seven minutes.
So, I, you know, I just wanna be in my little two cents here. Like I said, when we were discussing this, we were saying that this was ordained ordinance. And the fact that, I guess, a good number of people on this council or also on the council, when this ordinance passed, so, we should have all, that this was an ordinance that's already in place, that these licenses did everything that we asked, we put in hoops, and we did it all. So, this should have just been an approval because they did everything that was laid out in the ordinance. I know many of us are concerned, but we need to do what is right for our city. We need to be conscientious of spending money that is not ours, that we cannot lose.
So, clarification, the first vote is for call a question, we're voting on to do that and, and then we'll vote on the reconsideration.
Well, it, it depends on the outcome of, of, of the vote to call a question because if the vote to call a question fails, then I would say move to Councilman Lawler's motion of table.
City Speaker. Councilmember Lawler.
No.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
So, point of information, the question has been called, it passed. The next vote is a yes or no vote on reconsideration of the application. Your death vote allows us to change the vote of the last, of the last time to move forward with the application. Your no vote, again, blocks those applications from being processed.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yeah, yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
No.
Lawler.
No.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Motion for motion to approve the reconsideration for the grow permit at 1990 Elliot.
So moved. Any members of council have any questions? It's the exact same scenario that they just discussed.
Request reconsideration.
This is for the next one, the next one.
Council.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
No.
Lawler.
No.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Motion to approve the reconsideration of approval for processing growing permit. But that's a matter of investigation.
So moved.
Support.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
No.
Lawler.
No.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Want to go through the Illinois liability insurance policy? Does everybody have the invoice for that in the packet? Does everybody have a invoice for that in the packet?
So, Ms. Mayor, before we go on, if this is the application, if you can turn it back in.
So, did I have a support endless?
Support.
I didn't realize you had a tax support.
So moved, is it to be turned over? So moved, support.
So do you want to give us information?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is just our annual renewal for the, um, viability and health insurance policy for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two year. Um, it is twenty twenty one thousand and forty one dollars. So the city will be receiving a dividend in the amount of four thousand four ninety three to the net for me to two oh six high coordinate. Any questions for me, Lee?
Does he back coming up? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
In the packet, you have an application from Joe Jackson to be submitted on the equity task force. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes, yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have a motion to discuss the brownfield coordination?
Support.
Councilwoman Clark, you have a phone?
Oh, so, um, I, I talked to Amy and I also talked to, you know, um, and both explained it to me a little bit better, so I understand the process of it. But what I would like for the city to do and where we need to be, um, because we have all these areas of land that are sitting and not being developed or for one reason or another. And then we're not, you know, we're not doing the proper testing, you know, we're not doing anything with, you know, pre, before a development of, of developer comes to town. And, you know, I would like to see if there's some other way that, you know, for some areas that maybe add, give that a report, for example. We, we all know that that report is just, it's just a need to cut the trees down, put the top soil on, and the land is very delicate of the treatment and the things that have been done for it. She also spoke earlier about somebody that was maybe potentially interested in that. I think if we want to become more appealing, as much as we can do before these developers or people come to town and ask for these, these properties, that I would like to see us in that thing. Um, it'll just make us more fit. Because I did have a developer ask me questions like that, you know, why aren't, you know, why aren't we more prepared? Why are we, it was suggested that we're kind of hate that. So I just wanted to say that. Um, and like I said, they both explained to me, I understand it all better.
So does anybody else have questions about this process? Is everyone good with that?
I'm good with that.
What are we doing, why? And we have a kind of a discussion, remember, on medical and adult use permits and licenses. So we do have a copy of the ordinance in the packet.
So that was me too, right? So, because most of the concern for most of the people that don't want marijuana to be dropped, I think we need to revisit what we put in place. Cullen has, had given me some suggestions and I'll let him tell the whole council about how we, how, what that looks like. And, um, we can, um, after he explains that, I think it would be a good idea for the rest of the council to be present when we, um, go into more deep discussion about it. But I'd just like him for the ones that are listening and viewing to understand what we could or could not do, um, go forward.
So the council in twenty eighteen when we put our medical organs in place opted to cap, uh, the number of licenses at twenty. The idea behind that was some of the larger municipalities in the state, um, were kind of already ahead of us. City of Lansing, Leilien Township, um, we, we largely came up with that number, uh, because we made it proportional to what the city of Albion is doing. A couple of years later, uh, we adopted the growing processing for, um, adult use. Again, those are capped at twenty. Um, that does not necessarily mean that there are forty separate facilities, just forty. Generally, most of what's happening in most communities are, uh, the medical transitioning to adults because effectively the medical industry, I don't want to say it's completely dead, but I mean, it's, it's on its way out. Because the only population the medical industry really serves are those individuals that are under the age of twenty one, because anyone who's twenty one or over, whether you've got a medical condition or not, can just get it from an adult use facility. Some of the conversations that I've had with council members are, um, that if you're looking to reduce the number, um, that's certainly fine, that's certainly doable. Right now, all of our licenses, actually, the permits for, for medical are currently utilized in medical. Um, the ones that you approved tonight are the only adult use ones we have in place right now. Uh, my suggestion would be to do what Leilien Township did. Unfortunately, Leilien Township, uh, learned the hard way. Um, their previous attorney drafted ordinance and basically didn't have a cap on licenses at all. Um, and they ended up with, I want to say somewhere north of twenty, uh, dispensaries and retail sales. And I don't even know how many grows of processing right now, they're, they're sitting at about ninety licenses. They, uh, elected to reduce that number to, for, as it relates to retail sales, to six. So how they did that is, um, through a process of attrition. And they basically said, from, from this point forward, we're only going to have six. The ones that are currently in existence can stay in existence as long as they are continuing to operate in their present form and they can renew, you know, for however long. But once they cease to do operations, that license or that permit ceases to exist. So, um, you know, it all depends on how many licenses or permits the city wants to go down to. On the medical side, we're maxed out at twenty. So if you were to come up with another number, say the city only wanted to do ten, you would say, okay, we're changing your medical to ten. The, the, uh, the license to the permits that are currently being used will, can continue to be used and continue to be renewed. But once a businesses, business ceases to use it, that, that permit ceases to exist. And then you do basically the same thing on the medical, I'm sorry, the adult use side. Current, it should be easier on the adult use side because you have only approved the first ones tonight. So the limit, the number that we have is very, very limited. I wouldn't sit on this too long because if we get additional applications in that meet the criteria, you're going to run into the same issue that you had before, that you, you don't want to eliminate licenses that should be approved, so.
Mayor for Kentucky.
So also, my concern is that, um, in all the ordinance are the ones that got the license, are they able to expand? Because I did look at all of the expansion, um, how much it costs like to renew or get another license to make that, uh, so it can be bigger, process bigger than what it, what it already is.
So they, they can only expand as far as the city has the available licenses.
So I, I'm sorry, did I answer your question here? Oh, I'm generally, I'm generally supportive of revising any ordinance. This is the caution I would like to make to council before we knee jerk into limiting licenses. Um, because the community overwhelmingly voted to legalize, uh, adult use marijuana, um, it means that in all of our proceedings, it passed almost two to one. So we're representing people who have voted to say they would like to have recreational marijuana. So we have, we have instituted sales, which on this current, with this current council, that's probably not going to happen, but we have approved growing and processing. What I think we need to recognize as council is that when we're up here, we don't speak for ourselves, we speak for the people who are at home tonight, people who are taking care of their families tonight, people who might be employed by a decision we make. So before we knee jerk and cut the amount of licenses, limiting, um, economic opportunity for potential businesses in the community, I think that, um, to Councilmember Lanu's point, that she continues to make their council meeting, what type of community engagement is this council going to do to talk to people in the community and ask them, are they okay with going and processing? Are they okay with limiting the licenses? Are they okay with leaving it at twenty? I think before we make a decision for them, especially because the vote that happened two years ago to legalize marijuana was so overwhelmingly for legalization, um, we need to make sure that we're talking to our constituents. Um, and we can't just count on the, a few, you know, angry people to show up to council and yell at itself. Something we need to actually hold a forum, we need to be, um, and now that we can be in public again, it's warm, we should be talking to constituents about what they think before we make a decision again, um, about these licenses. So while I'm generally supportive of limiting licenses, that's what we need to do. I would like to see some community input before we just do that.
Hello?
You know, I, I, I think Councilmember Williamson makes an excellent point. The, the only thing that I would say to council is, that's something that realistically should have happened before we put this ordinance in place. And so it is far easier to expand licenses than it is to restrict them. And so you can certainly have those community engagement discussions. And if that's something council wants to do, you know, so be it. What I would caution you on though is in the interim, if you get more applications and those applications meet the criteria of the ordinance, as I said, you're going to be back here with the same approval issue that you had in the last meeting and this meeting. And, and so that's the risk you run in, in taking more time to revisit this issue. I mean, you could reduce the number, have those discussions and say, you know what? Our, our constituents are in favor of this, we can open that number back up. But it's far harder to do if you have those licenses occupied and then want to take it down. So, I mean, like I said, I mean, th- those are, I, I think those are excellent conversations to have. But the council should have had those before putting the ordinance in place.
So Councilwoman Clark, I'll ask, since you brought this to the agenda, what would you like to see have done? So who's your next?
So I would just like to put on the next meeting where all the council will be present, um, so for us to go ahead and have this special, or either have a study session on and figure out what, um, how we would like to get them to.
Any other items on this topic? Joe? All right. You care for the values, what do you want to see other than the government's, other than, yes, council area?
I'd like to see, uh, put under some, some type of health in the parks. I, I was out there yesterday with my grandchildren and the people pull up, they're rolling their marijuana cigarettes and they're smoking like they're looking for it. And, and, and I sit there and I just, I just looked at that. I talked to Chief Kip about that earlier because that is happening more and more. I was out there for three hours, almost two hours, and that's all myself. And it was at Holland Park, but it was not all African Americans that were doing it. And, and I think at this point in time, we've got to get some type of supervision in the parks at least from five until eight or something because that's the time that they come out and, and that's when it goes on. The drinking and the just drill the stuff off the window and that's it.
So is this, um, like for a discussion item?
Yeah.
Ms. Mayor, I have something.
Hey, Councilwoman Lawler?
Can we add to the agenda, um, how much would it cost? And how much would it cost to lease, um, a new vac for the sewers? Like if we go down and, um, clean out our sewers, one of those big old vacs?
A vacuum for the sewers, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that big old vacuum that go down in the sewers, um, when they do the water main breaks also. But I think, um, help me out, city manager, do they, um, can we also use those to unclog? Like our sewers, do they drain?
I would check that stuff, what's your rigor after filler? Um, but yes, we can add that to, um, as a discussion item.
Yeah, I just want a discussion, I just want to see how much a new one would cost and how much one would cost to lease. Thank you.
Any other items for agenda next time?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to know where we at, if I was going around in either patchy or filling or if you want to overlay, because some areas are terrible in the streets.
Any other items? All right, uh, so do you have anybody here that would like to come forward for, oh, comments? Just then, anything, yes. That's the rule.
We'd just like to talk, uh, we're in a pretty big issue in the parks with people vandalizing restrooms and trash. Every weekend, there's a ton of trash coming out of the parks. Um, some of it is bagged, which is awesome, but a lot of it is not bagged. It's just throw about or throwing the garbage cans that get tipped over by our occupants. And our guys are spending hours and hours and hours trying to put this up. Same thing with the bathrooms. We have bathrooms that are roped off, taped off, locked up, people are kicking the doors in, ripping the tape off, defecating in urinals. And it's just, we have to do something, talk about it, think about it. We're, we're going to get to the point where we're going to shut them down. So I just, maybe if it's something we can have council talk to the constituents about, understand we all have a duty to help take care of the parks, it's something that all the public wants to enjoy and in that regard.
I'd like to just add to that, we are just talking internally about adding custom surveillance to a lot of our park spaces. Um, our portable basketball hoops that were in the pavilion, they have been destroyed. They have been tipped over to where the rims are bent. All of the hoops have been cut with scissors or knife, um, yeah, just destroyed. Um, we've had, as Dr. Mo said, bathrooms kicked off the money from the park. Instead of bringing a lot of the toilet that was kicked off the wall. Um, the new sprinkler system that we just put in down in park, someone took the lid off and cut the wires for that, that we already have to replace. Hard to keep investing in our park spaces when, um, our community is showing that they don't care about the new investments that are being made. So we are discussing internally about possibly putting in surveillance in our park spaces because we do want to invest. We have a new, um, county parks village, so we are giving funds to improve our park spaces, but it's defeating when we are investing and things are, are getting vandalized. We need to be proud of our park spaces and proud of the things that we have in the community and take care of them. If you rent out a pavilion of the park space, please clean up after yourselves. Please make sure, um, the space is ready for the next person. We do have our parks where they do grow up, make sure that it is cleaned up. But we need to hold ourselves accountable. If we are renting these spaces, we need to make sure that we are doing our diligence to make sure that it is cleaned up, we're not vandalizing this because, um, it just leaves things, yeah, it's just not nice. So we need to take pride in. So we need to take pride in our space. And that is a conversation that we are having internally. We are possibly looking to close down the victory park bathroom just because every weekend, um, our park steward has to go out and clean up pieces out of that is not, it's just, that's uncool for us. So we are looking at possibly closing those down and having quarantines for the time being until we can get this situation under control.
Yes, you know, I had talked with Chief Kip about that before. He had talked about putting up cameras. While I was out last week, there was some kids that, well, the girl was walking across the top of the table. And so I said to her, I said, you know, you eat on the top of the table, she don't walk on them. And then two young men out with the kiosks on History Hill trying to tear the tops off and jumping up on the cement one, just dancing around on it. And I said, I said to them, you know, I was talking to the police chief and he said that maybe he would put up some cameras around here so we could see the things that you're doing and talk to your parents about it. They jumped off and took off, you know? So you, it, it, something has got to be done and cameras might be the perfect thing. The next thing we somewhat talked about was adding someone in the parks from, at, at certain times of day when you've got, uh, more people out there unsupervised, especially children. Because this can be a, a big problem, a big problem.
Yeah.
Uh, we need more surveillance on Western Street and South Diorco Street because of drag race. The young men and women that are drag racing up and down the street know when the police take their break. And I, over a year ago, was out in the car, I asked Kip about it and he was going to look into it. But it is a dangerous situation, especially with West Erie Street. We got traffic, these big old trucks coming down West Erie Street all the time. And this, if, someone's going to get killed, someone who that, somebody is going to get killed and hurt real badly. A child or someone's going to run out in this street. It's constantly, like I said again, they know when the police, the officers are on break. And that's, that's the time that they do it. Thank you.
Have you let Chief Kip know that?
I haven't talked to him this year.
Okay, specific times that you kind of hear them on a regular basis?
When they're on break, it's a, uh, just before noon or like five, six o'clock is that tonight or before the shift turns? Or lunch, before lunch or before the shift change, that's when they do it.
So you said at four, twelve?
And before the shift change to leave at six P M?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking the council for considering, uh, reconsidering, um, an amicable solution. Um, and then I also would like to be able to, you know, prove y'all wrong, uh, and show that we aren't the big monster. Um, I'm just a mom and pop shop. Uh, it's just me and my mother, um, running it. So, you know, we're not some big corporation. Um, and I would assume that you're not going to allow some big corporation into this town. You guys are trying to keep family and I'd like the opportunity to show you that. Um, that's all I got to say, you know? Thank you, guys.
Uh, practice for our, my hair was a bit nice.
You were timing it.
I was sitting other events and I raced over. So, yeah, I know, it was ninety degrees and it was super tight. Just telling, let me tell you, a little bit hot. So, Madam Mayor, council members, Councilmember Lawler, I see you on the screen, or I did at one point. Uh, Haley Snyder, City Manager, Clerk Domingo and the residents of the city of Allen, they're watching this evening. Good evening, Gary Tompkins, your Allen County Commissioner. And it is so wonderful to see your guys' spaces in person again. It's so awesome to be able to be here. Um, I hope everyone had a wonderful Fourth of July holiday weekend. Hope you got to spend some time with your family and friends. Um, the county board of commissioners will be in fact meeting, our first meeting in July fifteenth. That will be our first in-person meeting since February of 2020. So it's been a while since we've been together. So it's been quite a long time, so look forward to that. Um, with respect to the ARCA funds, the county continues to evaluate and review their, uh, their variety of suggestions that have been brought to the table in reference to those ARCA funds and how they may be best spent to benefit the county. If you have any suggestions, certainly, I know you've had a number of discussions collectively, but if you have any discussions, please feel free to email me and send them on. I'll be sure to make sure that, uh, I convey those as well as we move forward. So again, we don't, we're not under any time constraints to spend that money at this point in time. But again, as, uh, those worthy projects fit, we want to make sure that we're addressing those throughout the county, which includes the east side of Allen County as well. So, uh, the Allen County Broadband Task Force met in June. We met with Merritt Network, who'll be writing a study, programmatic collection on high speed internet apps in Allen County, specifically the eastern side of Allen County, because that's certainly a big one. Uh, these surveys are going to be conducted over the summary of like various methods, from anywhere from text messaging to emails. But one of the things that, uh, I really stressed to them early at that June meeting was the fact is not everybody has that capability. Uh, even some of us out in the country are quite challenged with even our Wi-Fi boxes and whatnot. And we may need to make sure that we're having paper surveys available too for people that want to do that. But I will feel, I will say, it is abundantly important, this will be for everybody on, on, that's watching too as well. It'll be abundantly important to fill out the survey. Irrespective of you want it or not, fill it out. Because the more voice we have certainly on our side of the county, which is a good thing. And we've got a number of representatives on the east side of Allen County, which is good. But we still want to make sure we have a very strong voice. So once these surveys are all collected, we'll likely have the results available in October. And once completed, a financial feasibility study will be conducted with cost and infrastructure requirements going forward. Uh, this is July, July fourteenth, we'll be having our strategy, uh, task force meeting. We'll have a gentleman that'll be, has experience with strategy setting with groups like ours that'll be talking. So we'll actually be in our first real strategy meeting moving forward. I think I might have indicated you before that I was in contact with the county, Boone County, Kentucky, uh, who was one of the first in the nation to actually do countywide internet across their county. They have about the same population as Allen County in terms of what it is. They were fortunate, they had a public-private partnership that they entered with, Cincinnati Bell contributed a significant amount of money to their project. And they're looking at about a twenty-four to thirty-six month implementation period. But would, wouldn't it be nice though that everybody would have access, at least accessibility to high speed internet? Because we all, with COVID, really didn't dispel the, uh, the reason that we, that we certainly needed. So, um, my monthly newsletter, hopefully you guys can still continue to get that and enjoy it. Uh, if you're not on the emails list and you'd like to be and you're interested in knowing on what's going on, not only on our side of the county, but Allen County in general, uh, email me, it's free, Tompkinscc7@gmail.com. I'll get you signed up. This month's newsletter, although it doesn't necessarily affect you guys directly, it does affect you indirectly as you may leave the city. Um, as we have, we've announced approximately twenty-nine point four six miles of chip and steel. It'll be throughout Allen County. I think it's about five point eight in, uh, in the east side of Allen County. Also any federal aid projects, any local road projects, it should be having, L B Towns has a number of them as well. So just be aware of those, there'll be a lot of construction. We are releasing our primary paving road list July thirteenth as well, so stay tuned for that. I'll get you more information. And then finally, also detail our main county recycling events that will be happening the rest of the year, uh, including an opportunity for those who like recycled appliances. I know that was a big question a lot of people had when I was volunteering this past Saturday out at, uh, of the, uh, catch and field there. As a matter of fact, that even though we don't have any more recycling events, there is a place, location, pool water. You'll be able to see it on the newsletter for a very, very minor fee of two dollars, which is very small. And you don't have to, you don't have to actually drain the, uh, the antifreeze or the freon. You'll actually just take it for, for a very small fee. So again, something I want to take a look at, I've, uh, now that I'm the chair of the, uh, Allen County Recycling Committee now as well, not a lot of my many. But, uh, one of the things we're talking about is what kind of additional events could we provide for the county? Not only that, but for the east side of Allen County too. We start relatively limited. I will tell you that recycling event was awesome. Great to see a lot of people out there from Alvin and got to talk to a lot of people because it's one of the things I like to do. Um, and I helped out, we collected over eighteen thousand eight hundred pounds of electronics, which is pretty good considering. Um, we had virtually a full trailer of tires. It was amazing amount of tires I seen came in. Uh, and it's good, we'd rather see those as we all indicated, we ought to see all of that stuff. Other than on the side of the road, we'd have it in a trailer if we could. And then we had, uh, full overflow of scrap metal. So it was a significant, also Grainger was there for just garbage collection and they were filling it up. So exactly, so it was a great event, certainly appreciated that opportunity to participate in that. And again, we're going to be discussing about how many more events we can have going forward because we get that kind of response from people. Like I said, we really had it there than on the side of the road or in the parks as well. So, I mean, that's, that's what I deal with. And then finally, real quickly, I just want to say that I thoroughly enjoyed, thank you to Lynn Reed and all of the committee and everybody for the wonderful Juneteenth celebration on the twenty-sixth. That was awesome and great to be participating in that and, uh, had a lot of fun. And, uh, you guys always do a wonderful job each and every time, so certainly appreciate that. So with that being said, unless there's any questions, it's always a pleasure to be with you guys. And I'll just finish with, always feel free to reach out to me if you have any discussions, anything, I can be assistance. So I'm more than happy to help, all right? Thank you very much.
July fourteenth, your meeting?
Yeah, July fourteenth, yeah, we'll have our strategy task force meeting, the Allen County Broadband Task Force will be meeting. Um, that's our first step in that process. Uh, there are some key community members or some key members that also will be meeting July twelfth. And you guys may be getting invitations, but I don't know yet. We're still trying to figure that out and how that works forward. So it's now that we're finally getting, beginning that wheel to move now, we're starting to actually get the wheels turning. So hopefully we can get moving pretty quickly and have some real results.
And what time is that, what time do you like working?
Uh, boy, oh my gosh, Mayor, you got me on that one, no? I'm usually pretty good at that, because I usually have my calendar.
Did I get this?
No, you're, you're great. I think it's, uh, it's one to two thirty, I believe, one P M to thirty. I apologize if that's not correct when I look at this footage. I will definitely do so, I'll verify that, so, oh, you got me. Not often, I know, see, I'm out of practice, I know, I need to get used to this again. Thank you all very much, have a great evening.
Um, any questions or comments for a period before he walks off? Call him, you have a question, or not? No, forget it. Yes, I'll.
So I just wanted to take one minute, uh, some of you probably have seen a gentleman standing behind me here. No, he's not my slightly better, but he's stunned on. This is, uh, Mr. Lars Karar and he's, uh, you've probably seen him on Zoom. He's, uh, newer to our office, joined us in November. Um, he's the Assistant City Attorney, so you may see him here from time to time. So I know some of you got a chance to meet him, but it's probably good to put a name with a face. So I just wanted to make sure you knew who this guy was. It's nice to be here, everyone, I'm looking forward to working with you all.
All right, so, uh, city question, we have anybody that was, maybe you'd like a public comment? All right, city manager, for it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, cover my, a copy of my report was included in the package, a short one for you this time. Um, the second progress made from first, second, third, Wildland, Frontwood Street project took place on Wednesday, June twenty-third. That project continues to be forward and attached a copy of the meeting minutes for you all, for your reference. And that went to the county, um, Tuesday, June twenty-ninth, we discussed the funding, the union's still property. And when the contractor took the building down, the pond has, uh, started to form on the property. So they are working with the contractor to give that, which we remedied it and leveled out so water will not pool any longer, so that, stay tuned, that will be addressed here, um, very soon. Um, they have conducted an assessment on all the land they own properties here in town. Currently, they have listed thirteen properties and they still have twenty-five properties to list. They're working to create a complete list detailing all of the listed properties and will provide that to city administration and for that, uh, council. Um, the bids for the Austin School property were due, um, June thirtieth at five P M. So I'm anxious to see how many bids they receive for that, um, for that property. That means Farm and Market, that continues to be a success, been five, had ninety-five visitors and six, had eighty visitors. I've also attached a market calendar for, um, you to reference as well. Happy to announce that City Hall hours of operation have returned back to normal. Um, and today, Tuesday, July sixth, we are open Monday through Friday, the meeting is at five P M. All of our fourth official meetings have returned back to normal, so we will be meeting in person. Um, the background, um, we received work that this will be installed on Thursday. So we are happy to have the new A A compliant rear, uh, entrance into City Hall. And then ARCA funds, I just want to remind council, I sent out a brutal survey, um, with a few dates to hold a study session. We did find, received the final amount for L B and R, amount has not changed, so that's good news. We are working internally to develop a plan on what, our recommendation on what to do with those ones. As you are all aware, there is an abundance of these in our community. So we are, um, working to have something prepared for you, to present to you. And then we will also open it up for any feedback, um, what you have in mind, what you would like to see, um, done with those funds. So please, if you have not, um, completed that survey, please take a look at that and select a date and time that works best for you so we can get that scheduled. And with that, that was, all right.
Yes, city.
And you can email the company for the group for their grocery shopping and they want us to come together and have that meeting.
I have not, do you, who all is on that committee, um?
No, that, you're not sent to email with everybody that should be.
Yes, I will.
I had sent you a follow-up email to that, I was a little bit waiting on your response to that.
Okay, okay, all right, I'll do that, thank you.
All right, so do we have any questions or comments for anything for a moment?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I actually have a couple. Um, first and foremost, um, I wanted to invite any and everybody to our fourth and fifth precinct, um, town hall meeting. It's July twelfth at six P M in the Caldwell, um, school parking lot. Um, anybody is welcome, so I just wanted to put that out there. Um, and I just wanted to say I was out covering drains, um, a couple of weekends ago. Um, I've, I've, it's, it's really tough out here in fourth precinct. I, I witnessed a lot of the, um, drains were just covered with dirt. Um, so that's really why I'm bringing to the forefront for a new vac, um, and things like that. So I'm just letting my precinct know that I am, um, trying to check into a new vac or whatever we may need to help, um, our drains. Um, we also want to say thank you to our Ms. Mayor for spending time with us in the fourth precinct and seeing, um, a lot of the challenges, well, just a couple of the challenges that we're facing over here in fourth precinct. And, uh, we hope to invite you out again to, um, hopefully something good this time. So we'll try and see what happens with that. Um, lastly, no, I got two more. Um, I don't know who this is for, but, um, Friday music in Holland Park, people are missing it.
Oh. That was Larry Williams with Recreation Department, he used to do Friday music in the park. So, I don't know, what kind of music? Just music.
Hello, did it go away? Hello?
Councilwoman Miller, can you still hear us?
Uh, okay, we just wanted to know if, um, music in the park on Fridays at Holland Park was coming back? And, um, we need twenty-five, um, miles per hour speed limit signs on North Street, please. Um, I would like to call privilege at this time, Ms. Mayor.
Go ahead, yeah, you're good.
What time is your meeting on the twelve? You didn't say a time.
Six, four.
Oh, it's at six P M.
So, Councilwoman Miller, before you came up, um, Gary, have you done surveys maybe before that meeting? Or have surveys?
I'll see what I can do, yeah. I can see what I can do.
Yeah, that would be a good start.
Yeah, it'd be a purpose.
Yeah, okay. So there you go, Councilwoman Miller.
Okay, thank you all. Have a good night.
Uh, I just wanted to take, uh, opportunity to share this couple of things. First, first of all, I want to, um, give a huge thank you to Fisher Tappens. Um, over the last couple of weeks, I have to learn about all the stuff that he's doing in our county, especially for L B and the east side of Allen County. And it's a lot. And elected officials, um, as we know up here, um, you know, we're not in Congress, not in Senate, we're not doing any paycheck activity here. It's a very small amount to do the work that we've been asking. I just want to really recognize work that Gary's done, especially in the midst of the pandemic and then coming out of it even stronger than before. So, um, big praise to Gary Tappens tonight. I also wanted to, uh, acknowledge tonight that when we were having our discussion earlier, there, there were the first couple, um, just, um, items on the agenda uh, for individual consideration, it got a little tense. And, um, there was some bad info between the city attorney and council members. Uh, I want to encourage moving forward, if there's something that our packets or you think that you're missing a piece of information, which, uh, I've had that problem too, and I feel like I just don't have enough. Uh, I was, I want to encourage everyone to reach out to the attorney, to reach out to, um, the city. Uh, I was, I want to encourage everyone to reach out to the attorney, to reach out to, um, the city manager, reach out to the clerk and, and gather that information. Uh, sometimes, like in this instance, it may not be totally known that you want it, like you didn't know that this ordinance had passed in. And so, um, if having that in there the first time around would have been helpful, we could have probably found it out earlier. And then the other thing that I want to mention is I just want to really thank Colin because I know that this was a difficult week. Because every time I called him on the phone, he picked up and answered. Um, and he provides really good customer service, social media. And I want to make sure, um, that I acknowledge that because even when hard things come up like things like tonight, uh, that shouldn't diminish the overall performance of our city attorney. Because who has, on occasion, not may be very happy in his opinion, um, but, um, works and does the right thing for the city. Uh, and so I just, I really want to put that out there. If you're having a communication issue, if you're having something where you don't feel the information, it's on me, it's on you. It's on all of us to ask and go get that information. Uh, I want to stop the spread of the suspicion that we have as council, like, ooh, if someone is getting something that I'm not getting here. Do I, if someone knows something I don't know, let's just ask the questions that people need to be asked and get the information. And when they don't do it, let's then bring it up. Uh, I want to encourage that friendly spirit. I mean, Councilwoman Hart and I, but the conversation on Tuesday, or the Tuesday after the last Monday meeting. But we have those conversations and Councilwoman Hart and I still come to council and act with respect with each other and continue to work together on things that we've worked together on and disagreeing things that we disagree on. And I just want to continue to encourage that spirit at council because that's what's going to move forward. And that's what has other people in our community excited about this council right now.
So I, you have a quick little letter that I would like to share. Um, you know, as elected officials, we get a lot of complaints, uh, you know, concerns, the issues. But I did get an email that I would like to share, um, just the shining of lightness on our police force. Um, so this was addressed to Chief Kip. Says, recently I called you for some advice and who best to help with our question on installing A D D at Saint James Episcopal Church in downtown Calhoun. This was not a priority on your to-do list. But you gave me an immediate reply, made a call to an officer who called me back within minutes and put me in touch with Public Safety Officer Thomas DePando. On the same day, I met with Officer DePando. He was knowledgeable, polite, professional and informative. He examined our new equipment, expect, inspected our church facility and suggested many valuable tips on the installation and use of the A D Ds. I will meet with him again after the installation is complete to discuss our additional training needs. Thank you Police Chief Kip and Public Safety Officer DePando for the exceptional community support you provided to me and continue to deliver to the citizens of A A D. Sincerely, I wanted to call Junior Warden, Saint James Episcopal Church. Just a little good news. So, any other comments? You got it in order? Yes.
I apologize, but I wanted to make sure you guys had flyers and all that from my home for the heat up sites. And so I did send it out for you so that you can have that. So I will go on and, I'll give it to you so you can't pass it out and ask the people.
Motion to adjourn?
So. The horse.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Um, motion to excuse, where she did let us know that she wasn't in her, so we hear the team support. City President.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Uh, Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yep.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mary Spender.
Yes. Motion to adjourn?
So.
Support. City President.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Mary Spender.
Yes. Major, nine ten P M.